Oh, sure. Okay. We'll...
You ready?
Ready? Ready? Mr. Sweeney? Okay. Mr. Mayor? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Staff? We're good?
Yes. Now, we're good.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not broadcasting? We're okay? Okay. All right. One more time. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for October 2nd, 2017. At this time, I'll ask you to please turn your cellphones off or to silent in respect to the decorum of our meeting. Okay? And at this time, I'll ask that we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Okay.
Mr. President, can we stand for one moment for what happened in Las Vegas?
Sure. A moment of silence?
I'll let you conduct.
Okay. So, in lieu of the sad events today in Las Vegas, Nevada, we'll take a moment of silence. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I'll go through our future meetings, and I'll bring up requests that have come forward from the mayor and from Commissioner Ritz. So, our future meetings include: The town council meeting will occur on November 6th at 7:30 PM. There will be a public hearing on the NLC Service Line Warranty Program on October 16th at 7:30 PM. This meeting relates to the potential of the town recommending this warranty program that could be useful for people. The Citizens Advisory Committee will have a meeting on October 17th at 7:30 PM. And a quarterly planning meeting, Planning Commission meeting, will occur on October 30th at 7:30 PM. Now, at this time, I'll turn to the board. Would anyone have an issue if we were to move Agenda Item I from the main agenda forward so that we can handle the swearing-in of Commissioner Ritz and Mayor Briggs? Would anyone have any issue with that item? Okay. Very good. So, did you gentlemen flip a coin to see who goes first? Or how would you like to handle this?
I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. So, at this time, yes.
I can have my other guest come up with me. Oh, God.
Sandy Dalton, Clerk of the Circuit Court, here to do the swearing-in.
Okay. Sure.
I don't know who your photographer is, but they should tell us where they would like you to be.
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. Sure.
How beautiful. Is that good? Okay. Okay. I was going to ask you to raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you, Donald and Briggs, solemnly declare and affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland, supporting the Constitution and laws thereof, that you will, to the best of your skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of mayor for the Town of Emmitsburg, according to the Constitution and laws of this state?
I do.
You are sworn. That's part one. Congratulations. I need to get your signature.
Thank you.
And your beautiful family should stay. You're not finished yet. I get your signature when we're finished. How's that? Well, I hear you're coming, so go ahead.
I'm a lefty.
Yeah, I'm a lefty, too. I hear you. That's why I had to get the book so I could take the pages out. I can't write in it.
Okay. There we go.
And then, if I may, present to you a certificate from the State of Maryland to Donald Briggs of Emmitsburg, Maryland. Greeting. Be it known that the people of the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, reposing great trust and confidence in your integrity, wisdom, and wisdom, did elect you mayor for the Town of Emmitsburg. You are therefore to execute the said office justly, honestly, diligently, and faithfully, according to law, and hold the same for a three-year term as determined by and according to the Code of the Town of Emmitsburg, or until you shall be duly discharged therefrom. And having administered the oath of office for your said office, I subscribe my name and affix the seal of the Circuit Court for Frederick County, Maryland, on the second day of October in the year of our Lord, 2017. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. You are official. And your family is beautiful. And I have work to do.
Next. I've got to quit this. Don't work me nonsense. I have a pagoda. They're going to carry me in.
Did you sign that?
Okay. Mr. Briggs, everything signed, I trust? No? This is the town document? No problem. This makes it official locally.
Thank you, Sandy, for coming up together. I really appreciate it.
I love Emmitsburg. It's my privilege. You mind if I date this for you? Okay. Congratulations to mayor and to the Town of Emmitsburg.
Let's swear Mr. Ritz in, then we'll give you both the opportunity? Okay. Mr. Ritz, we invite you to the dais. Or from the dais. The podium.
Hey. Hey, guys. How you doing?
Okay. Good job, fellas.
Let's get you... Where would you like photographers?
You set up, and I'll...
Okay.
Mr. Ritz, congratulations. If you'll please raise your right hand. I, Joseph Ritz, do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland and support the Constitution, laws thereof, and that I will do my best, I will do to the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality, prejudice, execute the office of Commissioner for the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, according to the Constitution and laws of the state and the Charter and the Code of the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
I do.
Congratulations, Mr. Ritz. Commissioner Ritz. You get to do it like I did, upside down. Okay. There we go. And if he'll date. Okay. Thank you again. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Let me sign this. Beautiful family. They're good. Okay. And to 2017. We get... We're good. I think I get everything right now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can we get a picture of you and Commissioner Ritz together?
Okay. Sure.
Just that, if we sat down.
Sure.
That one. The money shot.
All right. Well done. Okay. So, as part of our swearing-in, we usually offer the newly-elected a moment to say a few words. We'll start with Commissioner Ritz. Anything you'd like to say?
Sure. I was just going to save it for Commissioner comments, but I'll go ahead and do it now. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to vote for me. Really do appreciate it. Looking forward to a second term. I also like to thank Ms. Joy for stepping up to run. As I can attest, it is a difficult decision, and she has a lot of great ideas, and I know that she cares a lot about this community. I also like to thank the three election judges, Ms. Sharon Hain, Ms. Charlotte Mazaleski, and Ms. Barbara Whedon, for their time that they spent as election judges on Election Day. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thanks to my beautiful family for coming, and my mom and my uncle as well. Thank you.
Mr. Briggs?
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Commissioners. It's been an honor to serve as a mayor of the Town of Emmitsburg for the last six years, and I'm looking forward to the next three-year term. We have a lot to complete and a lot of new things to do to take the town to a higher level. Six years ago, we started out with the statement, "Let's take back the square and make the downtown pedestrian-friendly." And even though we were burdened by truck traffic, we can do this. That was our goal. We started out modestly settling on a date of establishment for the town in 1785. Many of you all can remember that. We had a war. Was it 1757 or 1785? And they settled ironically on 1825. So, we got ourselves back there, and then we followed it up with new signs. We moved the Christmas tree lighting down to the square, which had been held for 100 years or more, back from where it was. We've improved eight sidewalk connections. We replaced street lighting with LED lighting, reducing costs 40%. We... Four million dollars' worth of solar panels on town accounts that currently have energy savings of $72,000. Over $250,000 worth of grant money has gone into downtown property owners, properties for facade improvements. That take those 50% grants, so they've got $500,000 that's gone into downtown. I want to commend the staff, Ms. Sipperly, and Kathy, our town manager. They've worked. And now, Matty, we're all working very hard on this. We constructed a new wastewater treatment plant, a $19 million wastewater treatment plant. It came in at only 1.5% over budget cost. That's impossible for a public project to come into that way. And we attribute that to the strong staff coverage of that and making sure it landed safely. We currently have the square revitalization sidewalk project underway, and pretty soon we'll have a sidewalk from Track Road on the west side all the way to Emmett Gardens, Jubilee, the commercial section. And that's a realization that'll be finished up probably by the Christmas of 2018. And the Flat Run Bridge is going along, and new construction includes a recreation enhancement of a new swimming pool, a dog park, and we're looking at other sidewalk connections to work with that, too. We have a confirmed commitment to sustainability, doing things today that will benefit future generations. Everything we do today is for future generation, not us. We're here. We're safe. We've got it. We don't need people, our young people. We've created Green Team. We have solar power. Algae control at Rainbow Lake. And in confirmation of our efforts, the Emmitsburg community received a prestigious 2017 State of Maryland Green Registry Leadership Award. We beat out huge towns, and one of them was Annapolis, in our efforts here. And it always... We speaks to our staff and our Board of Commissioners. We're going with downtown grants. I've already spoken about that. But we will continue with the grants and go after aggressively improving our property with grant money and properties here, and enhanced marketing is our goal. That's the next step. We have our finished product, the town, and we're already getting some strong nibbles from people about commercial development up here. And I want to thank everybody that voted for me, and I want to thank my family for their support, and it's been a pleasure working with this board. And we're going to do great things the next three years. We're on the way. Again, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, sadly, we turn back to the mundane. We go to our meeting minutes. Did... Well, I have faith everyone had the opportunity to read the meeting minutes from the September 5th meeting. Were there any modifications, changes, or enhancements that we're hoping to see?
I have none.
No? Okay. Okay. Well, with that in mind, is there a motion to accept the minutes for the September 5th, 2017, meeting as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the September...
5th.
5th meeting.
Very good. The motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Very good. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Great. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right. We now turn to the police report. Good evening, deputy.
Good evening, all. Deputy Whitehouse, Sheriff's Office. This is the town report for September 2017. We had 26 traffic stops with 30 violations. We had four traffic collisions. One needed to be documented. We had a couple parking complaints, and one of those was issued a citation for one of those, especially parking on a sidewalk. Let's see. We had 20 toss cards, two bike patrols, did a lot of patrol checks, and I got out, and myself and Deputy Mustar got out and walked around the town quite a bit. We get out during the day when the traffic or the construction's going on, just speaking with the flaggers and the staff over there to make sure everything's going okay. The calls for service, you can see we had 12 thefts. We'll go over that in a second. Destructions of property were two. Those were kind of related to the thefts. Seven alarms, 12 noise complaints. I think there was a lot of those are probably party-related. Nine 911 calls, suspicious vehicles. We had five of those. I think those are actually up. The suspicious calls are up, trying to preach it, preach to, you know, if you see something, call or say something. So, I think that helps out. The arrests, we had a criminal arrest, and we had a criminal sub served. On the back, the next page, we had the special assignments and events. Deputy Mustar attended the Getting Ahead, graduation at the Seton Center. Myself and Deputy Mustar attended the Town Business Breakfast at the Carriage House on the 20th, and the election on the 26th. One of us was present throughout the day in case anything would be needed for anything. Under the comments, we had damage of approximately $500 worth of trees down the Emmett Gardens area. Looks like some juveniles may have hacked up some trees with a hatchet or some item like that and just kind of threw the trees in the creek there. Arrangements have been made to repay the town. The parents have been contacted, and they will be repaying the balance of what the trees are worth. Again, we had a theft of the dog waste bags at the community park. I'm not sure what it is with these dog bags, but apparently people like them, and they want to take them.
Again, you said...
And they're not cheap. From what I understand, they're pretty... Yeah, this is the second time, I believe.
Okay.
We've had three, and they're $150 a packet, bundle, and they're taking the whole bundle.
Instead of one, they take the whole bundle. So, I don't know. I don't know what the hot commodity is. All right. Several thefts from unlocked vehicles. The total in just cash and like loose change alone in these vehicles was 20, probably 20, it's around $2,500. I think it may be a little bit more than that. Like I said, and that's just in cash and loose change out of unlocked vehicles. I know that I've preached lock your vehicles, take items of value, hide them, take them inside, and, you know, lock your cars. I don't know why people aren't locking their vehicles, but this is what happens when you don't. This kind of stuff, if people were getting this amounts of money out of vehicles, this I think this occurred over a two- or three-week, or maybe a two-week time period. They're going to come back, even though the suspect in this case is actually arrested. But still, I mean, you never know. I mean, if they're going to get money out of vehicles, they're going to be back at a certain point in some time, you know? We had two emergency evaluations. I think both of those were over at the St. Joseph's Ministries. And we had some trespassers on Scott Road Farm, almost like an ATVs and a boat. And I think there was a kayak. There's a couple ponds out there on the Scott Road Farm. I know there's some ATV trails. I've walked. I've walked. I've talked with the town, and obviously, no one's supposed to be back there, so I just kind of walked the ATV trails, and then they go right to the pond. So, I had somebody approach me at the Sallow Hill Exxon saying they saw a kayak, somebody on a kayak in that, in one of those ponds. And somebody actually had a johnboat out there. I guess they launched it or were getting ready to, but this person left. So, I think we're... I passed that information on, so I think we're going to try to maybe get some signage up or something, so we can at least enforce the no trespassing, you know, at least ID them who they are. And I know we had an inquiry about the South Seton and Lincoln Avenue crashes, which the next page I've attached accounts since 2011. This is accrued all 2011 up to, I think, up to about two weeks ago. I had a member of our traffic unit was nice enough to do this for me. The total is 16 crashes there, and it lists them out, like property damage, hit-and-runs, injuries. It may be a little bit hard to decipher here, but bottom line is, there was 16, and it looks like three of them were injury-related. And I know at that intersection, there's a sign on East Lincoln at South Seton that says, "Right turn only from 3:00 to 7:00." That sign's kind of old, and I think people, just being around, I mean, I think the majority of these crashes, if I remember right, are when they disobey that. They try to go straight across during rush hour time or make that left, and there's not... There's no... You can't see cars coming southbound. So, the majority of those did occur while people were, you know, either making a left or trying to go straight across those times. I think the town has actually got a sign. I recommended like a brighter sign, like a yellow or something that, you know, that would stand out. And I've been enforcing that. I've been sitting there. Since we've discussed this, I've been sitting there, and I was there today. There's about four people that went across, and I just kind of stopped them and told them the reason and what we're trying to prevent. So, hopefully, that'll get around. I think the nice, a nice brighter colored sign will actually help out with that. So... And I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Just curiously about the traffic report.
Yes.
I don't want to assume, but could we assume that most of these are during the morning and afternoon rush hours?
Yes.
Okay.
They are.
So, and midday, we're pretty much clear?
Midday, yes. We're fine. Mostly, I would say 90% of them are going to be within that 3:00 to 7:00 PM, so evening rush hour time.
Okay. Any other questions for the deputy?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple people approached me about the... By the laundromat, the two alleys go across. I don't know what the names of the alleys, it's not test speak, but it's the two alleys that runs parallel.
Yeah. So, I know... Okay.
They're having sight. They were almost hit by a car, and they said they can't see, and there needs to be a light there. I don't know if there's a light missing, but they said that it's so dark that you can hardly see.
Are you talking about pedestrians or actually in vehicles? At the crosswalk there?
Yeah, the crosswalk. It's a crosswalk there.
Okay. Yeah. I know that was brought to our attention as well.
For the trucks, right?
What's that? I'm sorry.
About the 18-wheelers?
Yeah.
No, they're just about the pedestrians and crosswalks. People were concerned with that.
There's no light, no light on either side, and then you can't see the people when they're going across the road at nighttime. Nobody can see them, so you're walking. And the lights blind them coming up the road, from what I understand. But before I came into a meeting tonight, they, a couple stopped and told me that they almost got hit crossing the road with their dogs, almost got run over, you know?
Yeah. And I know, I mean, I know they're supposed to yield, the car's supposed to yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk, but it's just a sign, and it's just a crosswalk, so I would recommend, you know, let the cars go by. I mean, I don't think there's really a rush to get across. I mean, why chance it? You know what I mean? But I mean, I know it's a law, but I mean, just kind of...
Maybe we can, maybe see if we, how the lighting is. I don't know if you go up there and down, look, you know how bad the lighting is up here or not?
It's dark. It's dark there, yes.
It's where one of our crossings are, so...
Right.
I don't know if, when they, I don't think we have put in sidewalks on the side. I don't know if we can move one of the lights down or...
I'll have to look at it. I know there are a couple lights that are out and are waiting to be repaired, and I don't know if that's where they are, because there were, I think there's two on East Main and two on West Main. I'll take a look at it. I know we've talked to State Highway about getting a pedestrian sign put in the middle. Like, you know, some of the other intersections have it, but that one is constantly being struck by tractor-trailers, and so they're not going to put another one up. But we'll see what we can do about lighting.
It's been three or four people now in the last week or two that comes in.
Okay.
Okay. Any other items for the deputy? No? I was going to say this for the town administrative business piece, but it appears as if the sign on the east side of town has been tampered with again. It looks like, okay, it looks like it's been separated from one of the posts, so we have maybe some souvenir hunters from...
The welcome, the big sign that was replaced?
Correct.
Okay.
That one looks like there's been some interest there.
You can see where it's like sort of separated from the gap, like someone's taking a crowbar or something like that, trying to...
Let's say, you know, a hunting camera would be great out there and get some faces, yeah? Beyond that, we have the Halloween Parade coming up at the end of the month. I know you know about that. And also, on the weekend of the 14th and the 15th, the Bike MS Mason-Dixon Challenge will be riding through town, I believe, on both days. So, just be mindful that there'll be more bicyclists in town, you know, towards and so on.
October.
October. Correct. I'm sorry. October 14th and 15th. That's my understanding.
Okay.
So...
So, just an influx of bicyclists in town?
Correct.
Okay.
I know we had an event with one of the last rides at Track Road, so...
Yes.
So...
Yes. Okay.
Great. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Since you brought Halloween up, I might as well go ahead and do it. The Lions Club would like to, Halloween will be 31st of October, which is Tuesday.
The Tuesday, yes.
Yes, Tuesday. We will have a parade at 7:00, and that'll go from DePaul Street down, if we can have the deputies, maybe in front and back, if you guys are on duty then.
We'll be on.
Then trick-or-treating will be 5:30 to 6:45, because it takes 15 minutes to get up for the parade.
Okay.
And then, there will be a block party at the fair hall, right after the parade. The parade will end at the fair hall, and there will be a block party at the fair hall for the children and the parents.
Got it.
Probably about 7:15, 20 after 7:00, something like that, after the parade's done. Is that okay with everybody? Usually, we have calls about when it's trick-or-treating.
We haven't got them yet, but I'm sure they'll be coming soon.
But we just probably run from 5:30 to 6:45, so that's around 15 minutes.
We'll be there.
Streets will be only full of kids. Well, hopefully, it'll be done. It's going to maybe be a little problem with sidewalks and all done.
I don't know where they'll be come October 31st.
Hopefully, it'll be mostly done.
Perfect. Complete.
That would be nice.
We'll know shortly.
I'll put it, I'll, I'll let them know, just so that maybe they can clean up a lot of areas.
Okay, any other items for the deputy?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Lock the cars. Be safe, yeah, lock our cars, indeed. Okay, we now turn to the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for August, and I'll just highlight some areas. In the streets, staff repaired some leaning street signs around town and conducted a maintenance check on streetlights in all the developments. And they repaired one on, on West Main Street where the fixture was broke off and leaning, as well as repaired one, another one on 200 West Main Street. As far as the sidewalk and the bridge project, staff continues to dig up and install some new curb boxes as work continues along West Main Street and now East Main, as well as marking utilities as needed on Main Street. In the parks, staff weed killed, rotor tilled, and drug up grass off of ball field number one in Community Park. We actually have a travel softball team that's been utilizing Field One on a regular basis, so it's getting used, and it's being well taken care of. And staff continues to work on installing the new board fence along Community Park Road. Like I mentioned before, that's part of a grant, it's being grant funded. Water, the, in August, the Rainbow Lake was only .1 inch below the spillway level. And however, I checked today, and we're down, we are now down to 16 feet, which is about .6 inches below spillway. And in August, our wells are, were an average of 7.25 feet below their, their levels. They are starting to move a little bit downward, especially well number five, which is starting to drop. But right now, we're okay, there's no worries, we don't need any extra water from the mount. As long as we get some rain in the next month or two, we're, we're holding pretty good. The LG Sonic, I did not put in here. Water was looking fantastic at the lake for the last two or three weeks, since they got all the connections, all the wires, all the transmitting fixed. They started transitioning what they were doing as they saw the algae change. Now that the lake is dropping, we have a different kind of algae that's prominent that they are now targeting. So we expect to see that to continue to, and clear up. The wastewater, we still have a 4.79 inches of surplus of rain. We received 5.40 in August. However, we've received no significant rain since the end of August. In September, we reserved less than two inches of rain, and the normal's about four and a half. So we're gonna continue to wa, monitor the rain. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of August, and we did never, we did not exceed the plant's capacity. We did have 43% of wild water in the month of August. Trash pickup will remain Mondays for the remainder of the month of October. And I've highlighted some of the meetings that I attended in the month of August.
Great. Any questions for the town manager? No? Okay. Regarding the recommendation for the sign at Lincoln Avenue where it meets South Seton.
Yes.
Is that something we could do within a reasonable amount of time?
We've already done it.
Oh, really?
We are actually going to post signs on East Lincoln and West Lincoln, making it right turn only from 3:00 to 7:00 in both directions.
Okay.
So you'll have to turn right whichever way you're coming out of Lincoln, and hopefully, that will rectify the situation. We did not get yellow, however, we got very large.
Good.
Signs. Commissioner Buckman, will that kinda hit the mark for the moment, you think?
I think we'll have to watch, if it decreases the accidents, then we've done right.
Great, okay.
I'm concerned, once, once the Seton Center is up and running, that there's gonna be more traffic coming out of there, that we'll have to watch then also.
Right, the next step would be, be then probably to do a traffic study, and that would require hire, hiring an outside consultant. But let's see if these signs work.
Thank you very much.
And hopefully, once the construction's done on the sidewalks, there'll be less traffic coming down Lincoln as well.
Great. Good. Okay. It's your pleasure.
Just wanted to size what President Donald said about the sign outside of town, east side. If Jimmy and the guys could take a look at it, it definitely is some daylight that's coming in between the signage and the post. So before it gets any worse, hopefully, they can take a look at it, so.
Definitely, I'll have a look at it tomorrow.
Thanks.
And we may have to put up something, a sign.
Steel brackets or something, I mean, just sort of, I hate to say it this way, but something redundant, they know what they're doing, don't get me wrong. But something redundant to make it difficult to remove.
And we did, we reinforced it this time around, and that, maybe that's why they didn't get it.
Correct, correct, right, 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 right.
But we'll see. I will point out, I did add, attached to my manager's report was the, the report from the leak detection specialist. And lets you know, his original estimate was for 13,000, and he completed all the work for 7,500. So we will have a small savings there. And if you look at his chart on page 12, that shows you the leaks that were found, the amount of the leaks for gallons per minute, and then total estimated gallons per day. The main line leak was the one on South Seton at the post office. The valve and the hydrant were on DePaul Street. And then the service, the house side, was the DePaul Street's apartments, and that was on their side of the service connection, so they made that repair. If you drop down to the bottom, you'll see the estimated gallons per day saving, leak was 54,720 gallons, which if you break that out into a quarter, quarterly, that we were losing 4,924,800 gallons that we are now saving, saving. So his recommendation will be to come back yearly, if we can, if we can swing it. He'd like to do twice a year, if not, he definitely wants to come back for at least two days next year, because this is a reoccurring thing that we'll have to stay on top of with our aging infrastructure.
Sure. A couple of quick questions on this. First of all, there is a leak that's ongoing in Carrick Court, the actual court itself at the northernmost end. I don't know, well, I think staff is aware of it, but I don't want to assume as much. It is constantly wet, I don't know if it's at a valve site or whatnot, but it looks like it's a valve cover, like a smaller manhole cover, like 10 inches across approximately. And there's, there's a steady but small water flow from it that I would ask, get attention. And if we sign up for this contract with this, with FPS, it looks like we're gonna save money on water lost, but do we save money in having, you know, his recommended two visits a year? I mean, as opposed to one, because if we're doing, you know, 14, $15,000 on this, if it's 7.5.
I don't, it will not be nearly as costly as it was last year.
Okay.
Because it will be, what he says, it's, it's be quicker process. This year, he found more, he expects not to find as many. But the, the benefit of it is, if you break it up into two times a year, staff is able then to make these repairs. You know, you're not getting it all at once.
Sure.
And it allows it to break up, and if something, you know, he doesn't get to one, one area this time, then he can get here next time. But I do want to talk to staff to see what their recommendation would be, and if they would prefer twice a year, or just, we think we can do once a year.
Okay, and if there's one vendor, are there other vendors that we would have considered doing this? I mean, for the best price point, or?
This one came highly recommended from some other municipalities.
Okay.
And that's why we, we reached out to him.
Sure, 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 okay, great. Any other questions for the town manager?
I do.
Mr. Ritz?
The, if we do proceed, then would this come out of the water budget?
Yes.
We have, we have funds available for this.
Yes, we budgeted for this, this previous or this fiscal year, we budgeted for it, and it would come straight out of the water fund.
And then assuming we do proceed with the contract, then it would be similar to other things where it would come to us? We'd have to approve an official contract?
Well, this one, since it's under $20,000, it's one that the, the town manager can approve. And it, I will put it in the budget, so when you approved the budget last fiscal year, I did point this out, so in fact, you are, you are approving it.
Okay.
So I will include it in next fiscal year's budget, so it will come back to you.
All right, thank you.
Great, okay. All right. Anything else, just to make sure we're, we covered all the bases with yourself?
Hmm, I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, moving forward, we go to the town planners' report.
Yes, hi. I have not looked at hers. Okay. And the town, the town planner has been very busy. She does all the coordination, the initial coordination on the bridge project, as well as the sidewalk project. She attends the progress meeting, she is the one that is taking all the citizen complaints and passing them on to State Highway, and then asking, or answering any questions related to the project that we can handle in-house, as well as making sure the businesses are kept apprised of closings, as well as all the postings on 99, Facebook and the web. Myself and the town planner, we have attended two MS4 permit meetings. And beginning next week, this is going to be our focal point. We will be coming back with an update on MS4 for you at the November meeting. She's working on the community legacy applications and reports that are due this week. Sustainable community renewal, she needs to send that in by November. She's been working with me on the dog park, we did sign a contract for the fence. And we're waiting for a few more trees to be removed before we can proceed with that. She's been working with Ms. Nail on enforcement letters and permits. As you see, the Seton Center is up and running, she was working on the stormwater easement with that. Upcoming projects, we're gonna be working on GIS, MS4, the community legacy. As you'll see in the PowerPoint, the application for Emmett Gardens was, she submitted that application. And the Board of Appeals is in desperate need to meet, so she's gonna be organizing a meeting with them, as well as her duties with the Planning Commission.
Great, okay. So without the planner here, maybe light questions, if there are any?
Sure. I do have one question. I did run into Ms. Sipley when I was in the office the other day, this is regarding the trees at Emmett Gardens.
Yes.
Which we were able to figure out that that property actually is on town property. So my question, and perhaps this is something that could be followed up then, if, if not here, contacting Potomac Edison.
Right.
To, to see if they could take care of it.
She has been in contact with them. Unfortunately, they don't respond very quickly.
Yes.
It's, it's an email thread and phone messages, but we are working with Potomac Edison on getting some of those either trimmed, and especially the dead one cut down.
Any idea that, were they, were they like charges for that service, or?
I don't know.
Like a, sort of like a preventive maintenance type?
Well, they've been trimming them all along without any pressure from the town, so.
Okay.
We'll see how they want to proceed.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. Any other items for the town manager related to the town planners' report? Great, okay. Moving forward, we downturn to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ritz?
Well, I already thanked everyone, so, no, no need to, to do that again. I guess my one question tonight, because I'm an inquisitive kind of guy, I, I noticed we changed chairs around a little bit, is there any particular reason?
I don't know, good question, I just noticed that myself.
I, you, you have the esteemed chair of where Mr., President Donald sat for six years, where you are right now. I thought we'd break it up a little bit, you know, I bounced it off Commissioner Sweeney a long time ago. I thought I talked to Commissioner Donald about it, about it, and we'll let you give the castle. But just, we have new people on the board, and we got seniors, and you got a person you can talk to actively on every meeting, and bring you along, you're, you're the pups, and we've got guys that have been here 16, 17 years. And I just thought it would be a, something for you to, you talk to Cliff, he's, he's posterity on the board. And Elizabeth, go either way, which way you want to go. But just, just try it out, if you don't like it.
I, I was just, my, I know we'll be potentially reorganizing the board later tonight, so.
That's my thought.
I'm assuming if, if Commissioner Sweeney maintains his vice presidentship and Mr. O'Donnell as president, just the logistics, you know, like, let's say you have to slide the gavel over, just, that's, that's all I was thinking too.
They've done in the past.
Don't overshoot.
Why, no, 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 ever so gently, ever so gently. Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ritz.
Great. Commissioner Sweeney?
I do have one. The, hopefully, the sidewalks are gonna be done, but they, they have missed a lot of pieces from the beginning, clear to where they are now.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, winter time's coming, it'd be, you know, snow and ice and stuff, it'd be nice if they filled them pieces in. I was wondering if the, most of them are the lights?
Mm-hmm.
So are they missing a piece underneath the lights like South?
No, they're running the conduit for all the streetlights last. So that's why all the wells are left open where the streetlights are, as well as the wells are for the trees. And unfortunately, if they don't get to the trees before the freeze, they're gonna stay open until early spring.
What true, yeah, I was talking about the lights.
It is gonna make it difficult for plowing.
Yeah. But the, since they're running new conduit, and maybe if you can look at that spot before they do the sidewalks on that side.
Okay, by the laundromat.
Maybe placing a light there if it's too dark.
Is there one missing from there?
I don't know if it's missing, or it just doesn't have one at all. The complaints that I had from all four people were that it was too dark, you can't see.
I'll look, I'll look at it on my way home, I'll have to double check.
Okay. Commissioner Sweeney, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner Buckman?
Okay, so as my capacity as citizens advisor, people are wondering, when we put in the water fountain at the dog park, is it possible that we could put one in the community park, maybe a bottle filler water fountain right up against the bathroom? Because we don't have a, a water access for our community members at the park. That. Also, the same people were hoping that we could get, and I know they used to have these little bridges that go over that little ravine from the middle, the elementary school to that park, making it very impossible for the elderly and people with high heels to get across. The fence, which we love because it's, it's nice, and we got that grant, people were wondering if there could be some other entrance access points.
There are.
Because they're having to walk so far around, and you can't step over it, it's too high.
Mm-hmm.
So that. Also, want to thank Cattockton High School Safe and Sane for flocking Mayor Briggs. He had the flamingos in his yard there, so that was nice. Also, wanna thank our citizens, because they have been ingratiating our construction workers with food and drinks, making them feel very welcome in our town, and I think that's just a wonderful thing. And then the doggy bags. I've seen doggy poop collection centers where recycle grocery bags can be stuck in, so that if we're ever buying anymore, or we get them from the dog park, maybe we can do that, because that's another form of being green, is recycling those grocery bags.
Yeah, we can look into those when we go to buy new, I mean, new pet waste stations.
Right.
We can look at those for around.
People won't steal those, because we all have too many.
Dog park.
Hopefully.
One never knows.
You never know.
That's all.
That's it, okay, very good. Commissioner Blanchard?
Just a couple of things. First off, congratulations to both Commissioner Ritz and Mayor Briggs on their reelection. I commend your willingness to serve and the time that we spend from your families, it's a lot, a lot of time, so I appreciate that. And also, just, I always like the, the evenings when we swear up your when, there's always sort of a sense of optimism and goodwill, and I'd love to see that kind of continue as much as possible. I, I think over the 12 years I've served on the board, we get a lot more done when there's a willingness to work with each other sometimes. And over 12 years, sometimes I've seen walls kind of come up and then come down, and just try to see it continue basically as much as possible. I just think we accomplish a lot more together, basically, working as a team. Along those lines, I, I think we all kinda, you know, represent the town of Emmonsburg, and we go to MML meetings, or we go to some of the county, things of this nature. I think, you know, again, we're all trying to try and sell Emmonsburg as best as we possibly can, to hopefully encourage people to maybe move to Emmonsburg, or business to locate here. And I don't want to be Pollyanna about it, but, you know, try to accentuate the positive as much as we possibly can. And I say this as, as a person who's lived in town for 26 years, who's worked at the food bank for 10 years. I'm fully aware we got our issues, our problems. I'm not trying to push those aside, I don't believe in stealth government, trying to hide up anything. But I just think it, it, continue forward in the future from 2070 onwards, just try to push as much positive as we can. And I don't, and like I say this, I don't mean to ignore the problems. I worked at Baltimore City Schools for three years, and God knows, we had our serious problems there. But, you know, again, it's, it's much harder, I think, sometimes to be positive, much easier to be negative. And what can we do possibly as, as members of the community when we serve it, to try to be as positive as we can, with still being proactive, dealing with the issues that we're dealing with, such as poverty, drug addiction, hunger, homelessness, et cetera. And I think we're all trying to be proactive with this, but again, how do we continue to work our town into the future? If that makes any sense?
Sure.
All right. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. To reiterate the point, but really not to belabor it, congratulations to our winners, thank you to our election judges, thank you to all who ran for office, thank you to all who, who voted. And every year, I kind of have the, the honor and the obligation to, to share with the recently elected that we serve a very important role for our community to bring our wisdom to our positions. And it's also, like Commissioner Blanchard commented, there is some sacrifice here, and we, we understand that, and we recognize that. And we all are here to do what is best for our community. It seemed all of our candidates are passionate about the success, the success of our community. And again, to echo Commissioner Blanchard, I hope that we maintain that and move forward with that to all parties, and that, you know, we, we measure what we do, not in the immediate future, but in the long term. So with that in mind, regarding the election itself, there are two views on it. If there's a contentious issue, it always has a high voter turnout, it seems, if there's something that's drawing high opinions, it certainly brings more voters in. One might look at this as a disengaged constituency, I heard comments of that effect. I also heard comments that, you know, people are somewhat satisfied with what the government is doing. I can't subscribe to either position, I, I want to keep it kind of up in the air, in my humble opinion. And, and I hope that we, as a board, recognize that we are here at the leisure of our community, and we serve them. So hopefully, we, we can continue to do that. Personally, I met with the government representative from Mount St. Mary's, discussed with him some issues related to what's going on with some of the young people at the university. I was also in conversation with one of the deans at the university related to students on Main Street who were involved with some poor choice. poor choices. And in my view, the university made a very responsible and direct effort to address the issue. And I can't give any more, you know, any more praise on that issue to the university because I felt it was taken seriously. I think it's something that they intend to act on if they haven't already. And I hope that our community understands we have this sort of institutional memory of some friction with young people in town. And that if we bring these issues to the town government's attention and to the university's attention, hopefully, we can get appropriate remediation. It doesn't mean perfection, but it means maybe something better. And, you know, as a classroom teacher, teachable moments for all of us. Moving from there, let's see. I do see a lot of people out riding bikes, pretty stoked about that. I would really encourage our young people to please wear their helmets. Okay? There's a reason we have helmets and they're, you know, they're there for our own good. Nobody, you know, wants to forget to wear seat belts, I would imagine. I view helmets the same way, so please wear your helmets. I did bring the attention, the issue of the sign. I'd love to hear, you know, follow up when time comes, you know, if a repair is made or what reinforcements, redundant systems. I'm thinking of the B-17 bomber in World War II. You could shoot most of it up, yet it would still fly. So, you know, maybe something iron. I don't know. Moving from there, I also had the opportunity to attend the graduation at the Seton Center of this year's group who moved forward to, how to say it, economic stability and financially sound decision-making. I saw Commissioner Buckman there. I saw Commissioner Briggs there, sorry, Mayor Briggs there. And some other commissioners were there too. So I hope I didn't miss anybody. Commissioner Blanchard?
I make it this time. No, sorry.
Okay. It was a nice ceremony, but more importantly, we have a number of people in our community who are moving forward to be good decision-makers with their finances, something we, as a board, you know, hope that we do also. Moving forward, again, let's kind of, let's pursue a positive vision of what our town can be. I'll say this at election time and I'll say this all, you know, consistently. We've achieved a whole bunch. Okay? This has been a pretty special board in many respects. Moving forward, I hope we continue to kind of set our goals high and continue to serve our town well and continue to push our town forward to bring jobs here, to enhance the quality of life for the people who are here, and to serve to the best of our talents and our abilities. So as your president for the moment, I say thank you for that opportunity and hopefully, we can go get it. Okay, so I've said more than enough. Mr. Briggs, we turn to you, sir. Mayor Briggs, we turn to you. Sorry.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind people that we have a Frederick County Narcotics Anonymous meetings location. It's at the Christ Community Church at 303 West Lincoln Avenue. And where alcohol culminates started out and was kind of a, something undercover many years ago. It's out in the open now. This is for you if you've been re attracted to or the threat of drugs. You have friends here. And again, that's on Monday nights at 7:00 PM at Christ Community Church, 303 West Lincoln. I met with John Daniels, Chairman of the Frederick County Solid Waste Steering Committee. And we toured Emmonsburg for a future regional composting site. And we're far from that and grants and everything. We're location and things. We've got a lot of things to do on that. But again, we're going forward with this green initiative. I swore in on the 6th, I swore in two of the four judges. On the 8th, I attended the opening ceremonies for the Emmonsburg-Thermont Community Show. And thank you for Commissioner Liz for carrying the flag in. Really appreciate that. It was very, very kind. I want to also thank Commissioner Liz for going to the MML meeting, chapter meeting in August. I forgot to bring that out. It was very kind of you step in for me and I appreciate that.
Anytime.
Let's see. 9/11 memorial service at the National Emergency Center of FEMA Fire Administration. I attended that on September 11th commemoration, a very special ceremony. On the 12th, I met with Sister Martha and brought her into what I'm working with, the good mayor of Thermont, on can we get an additional bus ride at midday here? And we've gotten a petition, 300 people. It was done by a former student at the Get Ahead Ceremony. And also, we've, we worked on a way to, they had a wonderful thing, how to ask people to survey. It was all geared just to work and not to medical appointments, or maybe you wanted to go shopping. Maybe you wanted to do other things like that. And we're going to meet with the head of transportation. We haven't set the meeting up, but that'll probably be this month. I did attend the Getting Head Graduation Seton Center. It's the second one I've attended. It's a really moving ceremony where these people are lifting themselves out of the lobster pot they're going on. On the 14th, September, swore in two election judges, had a Green Team meeting at the office. We had a sustainability presentation by Elisa Orr from the Office of Sustainability for the County, a good friend of ours. And it was a terrific meeting. On September 18th, Mount, the Mount St. Mary's University Constitution Day Celebration, I read the preamble, the Constitution. I haven't done that in a long time.
Saw those pictures.
Man, and if I could, I'll just very quickly, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America." There's a lot of stuff going on about free speech. And it was a wonderful tribute they did. It was right in the, at lunchtime at the Mount and their Patriot Hall. We had our breakfast with the EBPA sponsor. We had 42 businesses and commitments to more work with the Mount and our other partners. And a terrific meeting. We'll have, we're planning to have one in the winter, January, February, and then another one in the spring, kind of keep a quarterly meeting like that. Mother's Day, Grandparents' Day at Mother's Seton was a terrific thing. See all the kids and all the people from the community. September 26 was the election. And Commissioner Ritz, congratulations again. And I look forward to serving with you. September 26, the University Athletic Committee Advisory Committee I serve on, we had a meeting at Patriot Hall, well attended, since they had it at lunch and they were paying for it. It was the first time we've had a full, full, more point meeting there. I met with Joe Leopards from Mount St. Mary's. And it was a very good meeting, updating on where they are. And I have to really commend them. We've been after them for, we've always gotten the answer that, no, it's not our responsibility. But they now know where the students live in town, what, where they live, their name. So there's a connection there. The town does not know, does not know that. But when we report a property and get them involved, we know it's college students, they find, and that's step one to what we've been after for. And the next step is, we're going to get properties pre-approved for them to live in, where they'll mow everything, you know, fire, instead of getting into the situation we have here in town on some other properties. I visited today, we met with, at Waste Water Treatment Plant with a user of Lagoon. And also, I met with, at the pool with the contractor, a swimming pool. I'm really pleased with where we're going with both of those efforts. October 8th, I will give the welcoming speech again to the Fallen Firefights Memorial Day. And it's such a moving ceremony. I just hope and pray that everybody would go to that. And it's like, I believe it's 76 firemen who lost their life in 2016. And we'll be honored there. We have, on the 9th, I have the National Fire Heritage Board meeting. I'm a director. And I will be attending the Job Fair at the Seton Center on October 9th from 1 to 4. And then also be at the, at the parade. Dog Park, we're going to have it open next spring. We were turned down for a grant, so we're going to come back to the board and ask you for permission to see if we can work out some way to get, keep this thing moving. And we'll also try to go for another grant, but we want to keep it moving. Square Revitalization, still June of 2018. And Flat Run, that's the fall, late fall of 2018. They will stop the project, sidewalk project. They will not work on it this Friday or weekend in prep for the, all the people coming into town. So they're going to get to where they're going. And they're almost finished going east. And they're going to come back from, I think it's North Alley, start working on that this week and get back up here. But thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's been a real pleasure to work with you and I look forward to working with you again. If I may, may I do these? Or do you want to do those later?
What are these? I don't recognize them.
Agenda items.
Suggestions for positions on the board?
Oh, can we wait till we get to?
Sure.
Agenda, if that's okay. So we can.
Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
I actually do. So the October 9th Job Fair, there's 45 businesses coming in that are hiring. So it's going to be a good one. So it's at Mother's Seton School. Okay. And then one other thing. If the EBPA is doing great, they're on fire right now. Evening mixer instead of a lunchtime thing would be good.
Okay. Okay. Most, I fall asleep early on.
Early evening mixer. Early bird evening mixer.
Thank you.
I have one question. Sorry, just one. The composting site, you were going around town. You have some proposed locations or?
I'm on that board, the Steering Committee. And we're looking for a site in Frederick County for regional composting and a grant site. And just looking at potential up here in the area and in Mayland here. He's going out of town. He's for two weeks on vacation. But, and we just got to apply for grants. We're trying to get this thing rolling. We want something on compost. I know it's been a strong point with President O'Donnell. He's always wanted composting. And this is starting to gel a little bit to get a wiggle out of this. We want to get 40,000 tons of trash out of, out of the landfill.
Yes.
Because we can't do it anymore. We can't ship it anymore. And organics is it. We're surprised how much our trash has dropped in volume going out the street since we've been composting again out back. And it's, it's something for the county, for the future. Okay, I'm sorry.
So you'll just keep us, keep us updated, potential sites and all that?
Okay, I will. Okay.
Thanks.
Who are you thinking of? Penbrook? No, no, no.
Always glad to help when we can. Okay. So moving forward, Mr. Mayor, just one other clarification. For the property sites that are potentially going to be pre-approved rental sites for students, the preapproval would come from the university. They would put their stamp saying this is an approved site. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. We've recommended everything from mold and radon, fire, everything, and that they should do this. And there is a strong feeling right now that they want to expand their student population out there.
Right.
But they don't want to build dorms. So we got to very carefully absorb them here. And we're looking at different processes. And they've been kind enough to include us a little bit on that. But we've been after them for a long time to identify where the students live is one. And next one is, we get quality apartments downtown.
Sure. So if somebody wants to have their property considered, it has to meet certain standards that the university is going to come forward with. Is that right?
Yes, for their students. They will not allow their students to live in anything that's not, has their stamp of approval. And it'll be checked annually.
Great. Okay. That's awesome. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving forward, we now press on to administrative business. And we have the consideration of a fund regarding accrued leave. Sorry?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. I don't believe we had anybody signed up. Mr. Ritz?
I was sure he was going to talk.
Okay. We're good. Consideration of a fund regarding accrued leave at separation of employment. We turn to the town manager. Yes.
Yes. And this was something that was proposed by the town accountant and something we've been looking at since Mr. Haller retired. And when he retired, he left with a large amount of vacation personal sick. So he had a payout that was funded from Fund One, which is your general fund, as well as funded through your enterprise fund, four and five, which is your water and sewer. So basically, I'll read to you what the accountant recommends and just give you a little bit of background. At the end of each fiscal year, the accountant calculates the accrued leave amounts for all current employees. So if everybody were to retire June 30th, 2017, what would be the town's payout for everybody? Worst case scenario. Now, yes, not everybody's going to leave at the same time. However, we do have some employees that have over 20 years here. And you have some other employees that are approaching retirement. So we need to start planning for that. And so your employees with accrued leave amounts in your home departments and Fund Four and Five, your enterprise funds, they're recognized by a journal entry by increasing the accrued leave liability on the balance sheet. The auditing standards dictate that this is a journal entry. So each year, that, their leave, their payout, their leave accrument is budgeted. It's put into their budget. And so if somebody's home department is solely four or five, it's already been budgeted for. It's already, it would be a cash item. So it's already there. And it's not something that we have to, to plan for outside of each yearly budget. However, employees in your Fund One and your general fund, because your general fund is just what you spend each year. You don't accrue anything in Fund One. They're not recognized in the same manner. And even though they're entitled the same payout as anybody funded by Fund Four or Five. So auditing standards dictate the journal entry not be made for governmental fund accounts. So we can't put any line items related to employee payouts in your general fund or in your Fund One, per the accounting standards. So as of June 30th of this year, 2017, if every employee were to leave, the payout would be $128,320. In an effort to start building a fund to pay these payouts, when your employee leaves, speaking with the town accountant, we would like to set up a account or a line item in Fund Two, which is where you set your side, your excess of Fund One for future, for future projects, future line items, for future purchases. So with that being said, that can be accomplished with a budget transfer. And we would recommend an initial transfer of $32,000, which is, represents about 25% of the current leave balance. And we would be looking to do this. The auditors come in the second week of August, October, and then they'll come in and present to you the audited statements. Right now, we are estimating approximately about $130,000 to the good from Fund One that can be transferred to Fund Two. Of that $130,000, if you vote to set up this line item, we would like to designate the $32,000 for that. So we would like you to consider creating this item in Fund Two.
Is this something you want preceding the auditor's visit? Or like, for example, do you want this done tonight? Or?
It's for your consideration. We can establish the line item. We would kind of like the direction of what we can go in so that when the auditors do come next week, you know, we can discuss this with Michelle and her team and tell her this is what we want to do. And this is what the board has given us permission to do and then get more direction from her.
So let's turn to the board. Does anyone first have any, well, I'll frame it this way. And if you don't want me to frame it this way, I'll back up. My suggestion is, if there are any questions for the town manager regarding this, we'll ask them. And then I'll ask the board if anybody has any issue with giving direction to staff to pursue this. Like to bring, this is something that we intend to do. So first, okay, procedurally, everybody okay with that method?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager, just to start? Commissioner Buckman?
Many companies, because there's been studies done about employees' well-being physically and emotionally, have a use it or lose it policy in place. Have we looked at that and considered that, that it really should be used? Because people need their vacations.
We have discussed with HR, and this is something we'll look at in the future, of not necessarily, we do have a use it or lose it for your personal time. You can only accrue so many hours and that's it. Then you can't accrue anymore. Not your personal time, your comp time. But we have discussed with HR about mandatory leave for encouraging people to take at least a week off every year. However, if you wanted to do a use it or lose it so when you retire, you take nothing with you, that would be a policy that you would have, the board would have to vote for. And it would have to go to affect. have, the board would have to vote for, and it would have to go to affect new employees. You see what I say? You can't make it retroactive.
Right.
Right, of course.
I think that is a big, your, the vacation and your personal time, your sick hours, is a big benefit that you do offer your employees. It is one of the things that's attractive, it's part of the package that you offer to them. We did cut back for new employees of the number of hours that they could accrue. If you recall, I think we did that earlier this year, no, excuse me, it was last year, that we made the changes to the handbook that reduced the number of hours that they could accrue for vacation, as well as, I believe, personal. And your sick time is paid at 50%.
Okay.
So this number here, the 128, it's not going to, it's not going to change, it's going to continue to grow.
Mr. Ritz?
I guess, looking at this, there's always a good, good and a bad. I think the intention is good, you know, hypothetically, if everybody did leave, you know, where would that put us? I guess the bad is potentially looking to see if we transfer the 32,000, would there be any adverse action? Assume not. My question to you is, if Ms. Mills and her team are coming next week to audit, does she go above and beyond auditing, and if we, as a board, direct her, you know, hey, this is what we're considering to do, and we're authorizing her to, to look at that, would she give some sort of, like, in my personal?
She's, go ahead, I'm sorry. She's actually already weighed into this, into it with a meeting that I had with her, I think last year before the audit, was something we started to discuss after Mr. Haller retired. So she's already kind of weighed in on it, but we can certainly get more direction from her.
You know, like taking the 32 transfer, how, could potentially, could that hurt us in some way?
I see what you're saying. Well, the one, so what we would want to do is the, and I'm just throwing 130 out there, that's the staff's estimate of what, when she finishes all the books from fiscal year 2017, it's going to look like we have an excess of 130,000. So we overbudgeted, shall we say, or we worked more efficiently and saved money. However you want to look at it, we have 130,000 excess that must be transferred to Fund Two. It's up to the board where they want to put that 130,000 in Fund Two. And so all we were asking for was to create a line item to help with the employee payouts. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And the 32,000 was just our suggestion. You could do more, you could do less, it's whatever we feel is comfortable. If there's more money that needs to be put towards project, we just want to get it started.
Sure. Okay, a gateway question. When, when does an employee become eligible for this plan, where they have access to, what, accrued leave?
After their, after you're here 90 days, you get seven days of personal and seven days of sick.
Okay.
So, but I think, and, and don't quote me on this, I think it says in the handbook you have to stay a year to be eligible.
Okay.
But I will have to verify that.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm not, I don't mean, I'm not testing you, right, no, that's fine, but that gives me a sense of it. Speaking of what Commissioner Buckman's kind of presented, in the fiscal, in the financial industry, there are obligatory times where someone has to take a vacation, so they hand over the books to a lieutenant, and the lieutenant looks and sees, you know, just if the process is functioning appropriately, and if there are any glaring flaws. Now, I don't know that we do that, like, for example, you know, with yourself, or with our accountant, or, you know, the clerk, or, and so on. But I don't know if that's something that we want to build into, kind of pushing the idea that time off needs to occur, just to force the issue beyond just the idea that, you know, the, the healthful mind, healthful emotional piece, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. The other side of it is, the accrued time piece does serve as, the, rather, the payout related to accrued time does serve as motivation for employee retention. I mean, that, that is a good, you know, means to motivate somebody, you know, who, who might want to go on, that has institutional knowledge, to hopefully make them, hopefully want to work here. I mean, so...
And it's in lieu of a retirement as well. I mean, we do buy into the Maryland system, but the Maryland system, their percentage is, is very low, that they do pay back, or however that works, the pay percentage.
Okay, so, any further questions for town staff? Okay, so, direction. Does anybody have any proposal for direction to town staff to pursue this? Do we want to see it as 25% projected, 20%, 15%? Does anybody have a number concern, what percentage it should be, if we do pursue it?
Did you randomly pick 25, or is that the standard?
No, that was what the town accountant came with. It was 25% of what the balance is right now, 128, and it was just to try to, to...
Make it down.
Right, and 25% seemed reasonable. I don't know that I would set a percentage, so that you can see when we do come to the end of the audit, and we see how much money we have, and we want to make recommended budget transfers. If there's projects that need money, I don't know that we want to be held tight to, okay, you have to put 25% here. I would just like the opportunity to be able to create the line item, and then put the percentage that staff would recommend, and then you can make the decision whether or not it's too low, too high.
So 25% means in four years, we're squared up, and 20%, it's five years, we're squared up. I mean, just simply put, so, you know. Anybody have any concerns one way or the other?
So we'd be voting tonight, then, just to add the line item?
No, not, we would be giving staff a direction to come back to us with a plan related to setting aside 20%, so, or 25%. You can see where I'm leaning. So, little slip there. My thought is that we set aside, you know, we, we set up the intention to set aside 20%. Okay, we go with a lesser sum, that might give us a little bit more flexibility. On the other side, if someone wants 25%, I'm open-minded, if anybody's really, you know, adamant about that. And therefore, anybody else, any thoughts? Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir?
My company, we, we have to take it, or we have to, they pay us for a week before the end of the year. If we don't take our vacation leave, then they pay us what vacation pay.
They cut us your check for it. Sure, sure, okay.
And then you don't have to worry about holding the money back, or saving it back quarterly, or for four or five years. If you don't take it, they automatically pay you for that, then the year, that way you don't have a lot to, to...
We, we had talked about trying to set aside a fund for, for, like a buyout, to slowly start buying, paying the staff for their leave. This was a much more reasonable approach. I think it was more something...
Less expensive approach?
Less, yeah, less expensive approach to the town. And if you start buying out their vacation time, and there is a family emergency, an illness, and we've bought back their time that they no longer have, you know, some people save it for, for family emergencies or illnesses, you know, unfortunately, if somebody gets diagnosed with a severe illness, they're going to need all the leave they can get. Now, if the board wants to direct staff to start looking at a policy to encourage people to use an allotted amount of time every year, you know, that's something that staff can start working on with HR. I think it's a good policy.
The enforced week, like a contiguous five-day absence?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney, just curiously, how does your business, how do they manage that when a person gets bought out? Oh, they handle it at the end of the year, so they start fresh, is that the...
Yeah.
Okay, so if they run into it, okay, well, that's an interesting method, then. Mr. Mayor, do you have something?
I agree with staff's position. We've gone over this for two years now, how, how to work this problem out, so it's not of another explosion. It was kind of an explosion when Mr. Haller retired.
The expense related to it?
I mean, with the amount there, and we just don't want to impose that. Another way of looking at it is, we do not pay interest on that at all, and when these wonderful people work for us, they're getting paid back in, in cheaper dollars of the future. You know, the purchasing power dollar does keep increasing, and, and they look at it as a sort of a, to them, savings, like their retirement, when they get there, they've, they've got another little bundle of money to retire on. And we have some excellent employees, and the tenure of them is incredible, how long they've been here, and how long they stay here, and it's a reflection of how we, we all treat, treat them, and they, it carries on to how they conduct themselves with the general public. So they'll do anything for you. I mean, they, they'll work around the clock. When we had that square waterline, they were there, one or the other was there, worked 12-hour days, and they'll do anything. And it's, I guess, I'll leave it up to you, it's your choice, but I fully support something that's very reasonable and rational approach.
Mr. Ritz, any thoughts?
I, I agree. I like your more conservative approach of the 20%.
Okay.
I think that's, that's reasonable for now.
A starting point, okay. Mr. Sweeney?
I don't have any problem with that.
You're okay with 20%? Commissioner Buckman?
20 or 25, I was more yielding to the 25, because the accountant...
Sure, okay.
...suggested that, but it's, it's, either way, as long as we're preparing, and we're getting ready to prepare.
Okay.
Preparations, 20, 25%. I'm not really set on a number right now, but definitely give direction to move forward.
Okay, so, Ms. Willetts?
Yes, sir.
The range is 20 to 25%. So it sounds like we have three for 20%, two for 20 to 25. I'll yield to the 20 to 25. So, does that give you sufficient direction regarding what to pursue for addressing, preparing for the payout piece?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do you feel you have enough direction regarding this topic, or do you, is there anything else we need to add?
Yes, so what we'll do is, we'll create a line item in Fund Two. I'll leave it up to the town accountant, what he wants to call it. We will shoot for 20 to 25% budget transfer request from you, when we make all the budget request transfer requests after the audit.
Okay. And how about five contiguous days? Does anybody have any issues with that, like five days in a row for, I don't know, executive positions or something, like where they have to take five in a row?
Don't have to tell me.
As opposed to, you know, breaking it up piecemeal over time? So they step out of the position that they're in, and somebody has to cover for them. That way, we have sort of an evaluation of accountability, like how they're managing money through their office. Is that something we would want to consider, or?
It already happens, but that's the way it works, they go out for weeks. I know what you're working, the bank, the banking.
Sure, right, right, sure, that's, I'm just thinking, but is that an obligation? I mean, I thought, talking to Ms. Willetts, it's not, they're not obligated to take five in a row.
That would be, I mean, that's what I would like to see, is, I think that if you want to direct staff to start working with HR to develop a policy on this, that we can bring back to you to approve and disapprove.
Sure.
But I think we should encourage a continuous five-day vacation.
Okay, and I think the other advantage is, I know that there's been a management piece that I've heard about, sort of in bits and pieces over the years, where, you know, some people are taking a day here and a day there, and sometimes it's hard to manage the day-to-day thing when you have that capacity. So, you know, there might be an advantage that way as well. Anybody, everybody okay with that, or do we have a majority on that, Mr. Blanchard? Okay, so the second item for five contiguous days for leadership positions?
For everybody.
I think everybody.
Everybody.
Full staff?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
Full staff.
Okay. I'm not trying to shortchange anybody, that's the thing, you know. I'm looking at from the flexibility versus the leadership obligation piece, so...
You're, everybody needs five continuous days, doesn't matter what their position is, they...
I'm not, no, no, I'm not against that, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying...
I don't have to be encouraged to take more five days, but some people do.
Yes, yes, sure, sure.
Me neither.
Okay. So moving from there, do we have any other issues for administrative business from, related to this item one? None?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Do you have anything else related to item one?
No.
You're thinking about vacation, I can see that.
I was.
Montego Bay, yeah, okay. So, anybody have anything to add to administrative business for the town manager to be mindful of or aware of regarding things in town? We did talk about the sign.
Not at this time.
I'm going to whine. One of our gateways, nothing horrible, one of our gateways. If we do have a street sweeper, or, you know, if we have to task individuals with this, the curbs on Silo Hill in front of the Jubilee are cluttered with growth and with debris. And I know a lot of it has to do with the traffic, but I think we can at least clean them up, so, it's just, that's our face. When people come in, they see McDonald's, they see the gas station, they leave. And if it doesn't look good, we don't look good.
Street sweeper will be out beginning Thursday and Friday in preparation for fallen firefighters.
That's awesome. Okay, man, shotgun. Okay, we move on.
Commissioner Donald, President Donald wants to write this.
I want, I would love that opportunity, but I know better, so. Okay, we turn now to the consent agenda. Everyone's okay moving forward from administrative business, therefore, we have the Board of Appeals, three-year term reappointment of Mr. Richard Capriva to the Board of Appeals, the term running from October 17th, 2017, to October 17th, 2020. We don't have any introductory items on this, it is the Board of Appeals' position. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Very good. The motion carries five to zero. Mr. Capriva, thank you for your service. We now turn to the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Blanchard?
Yes, Mr. President. Treasurer's Report, Town Emmett'sburg Cash Activity as of September 26, 2017, $5,313,250 cash balance, September 1st, 2017, $5,285,478 operating balance forward. And as always, you have the top 10 check amounts, the vendor name, description, et cetera. Whereas the top one coming out this month is the Treasurer for Frederick County for the law enforcement services that we acquire for the Frederick County, so...
And that's a quarterly payment, is that correct?
I do believe so, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Wouldn't it be nice? Okay. The Creemery Road Roofing Project, what, is, is that the, the pumping station on Creemery Road, is that correct?
Roofing project, mm, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Very good, all right, very good. We now turn to item L, the Planning Commission Report.
We only had one thing on the agenda.
Okay.
And it was an applicant for Emma Gardens, Lot 38. The homeowners of Lot 37 and 39 went together and split the Lot 38, and wanted to split the Lot 38 in half, and they needed permission to do that from the Planning Commission, and we gave our permission to do it. So they are now sharing Lot 38.
Nice. So they expanded their yards, more or less, and it was a vacant lot, is that accurate?
It must have been.
Okay. All right, very good. Moving forward, we have turned to our agenda items, we've gone to the swearing-in of the mayor and the commissioners, and again, congratulations. We now turn to the...